We're going to get the show on the road. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council's special meeting for Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everybody in the room to either turn off or mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. And I'd like to leave everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no quorum check this evening, so we'll move forward with public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody in the audience who wishes to address council on any item that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to come on up to the podium here and share your thoughts with us. Would anybody like to address council for public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move forward with reports. First trustees, we'll start down with Jack.
No report.
Andy?
No report.
John?
No report.
Bob?
No report.
Rob?
No report.
And Penny?
I'm just thinking, in light of all of the concerns about public gatherings, it may make sense to put our Saturday conversations-
I'll be dealing with that.
-on hold. Well, I'm just saying relative to the Saturday conversation-
Oh, okay.
... until further notice, so, thanks.
So, are you declaring that closed until further notice?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, that's a good call. That's a good call. Village Attorney?
No report.
Village Manager?
Yes, I have a brief report. Happy to introduce to you Kristin Kazinas is our new Assistant Village Manager. Her first day was yesterday.
Welcome.
So, welcome, Kristin. Kristin was most recently the Chief Financial Officer and Human Resources Director for the Village of Hawthorne Woods. Been there for about the last 10 years or so, and before that she was with Lauderbach and Amen. And we won't go back any further than that, but we're really happy to have you here and look forward to the work you're going to be doing. So, welcome.
I can't believe it goes back too much further than that.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard, Kristin. Okay, and Village President, I do have a prepared statement I'd like to share with you this evening. Rob and I have participated, Rob Bayhan, I have to continue to make that distinction. Unless we can call you something else, Rob. I'll just call you Apatoff, how's that?
Rob A.
Yeah, Rob A.
That works.
Rob A. and I, I'm sorry, Rob B. and I. They're too close.
Okay, back up the tape. Village President, I have a prepared comment to make this evening. Rob Bayhan and I have participated in several teleconferences aimed at keeping elected officials in the state of Illinois informed on the rapidly evolving health concerns regarding the propagation of COVID-19. It has become increasingly clear to me that we are lacking leadership on the national level as to best how to navigate this crisis. Many of the right answers appear to be inconvenient and unpopular, and in the context of the current highly-charged political arena, the information we are receiving is fashioned more toward debate than to solution. Clearly, we here at the local level have no solutions. I can only offer observations based on my recent immersion from the sidelines. Inconvenient as it may be, we all need to think about our responsibilities to each other in dealing with this. Dispassionate scientists across the globe seem to be in agreement that the key component in successfully mitigating the spread of COVID-19 involves suppressing transmission. In simple language, that means reducing potential contact with unknowing or uncarrying carriers. I spoke today at length with Becky Hurley from the Lakota Group, and we both agreed that potentially leading members of our community into harm's way would be, at a minimum, irresponsible. Therefore, we have elected to cancel the upcoming Winnetka Futures Open House, which was scheduled for Wednesday, March 18th, at North Shore Country Day School. Lakota will consider various options to supplant this important event, but at this time, no clear alternatives have been identified. In the meantime, I encourage all members of the community to make the time to better understand the facts surrounding COVID-19. There's a lot more out there than what is being offered by politicians and the nightly news. Educate yourself, decide wisely, and think about others. That's what caring friends and neighbors do and expect in times of uncertainty. And also, make sure to wash your hands regularly. So, and something we should think about, and I am going to be, you know, kind of hunkering down with Rob after this evening, is the whole concept of public meetings and actually how far we go in conducting this sort of thing. Obviously, things are unfolding on a daily basis, and, you know, clearly, I think we want to be smart about this and be as careful as we can be to make sure that we're not adding to the potential problems that are out there. So, something to think about, and if you want to share your ideas with me, I'd be happy to receive a phone call from you from distance, so.
Hey, Chris, just one additional thing, which is sort of an interesting, is that our local population will be swelling because all the college students are going to be coming home soon. I've got to go pick up my son on the 17th of March, so, you know, it's a really interesting- I wasn't expecting to see him ever again. He was going to graduate and move on, and, you know, suddenly, he's going to be home for a couple of months. So, that's sort of an interesting thing for local governments to have to take in effect, that we're actually going to have more people in our communities than fewer, so.
In lack of any clear direction from our friends at the federal level, we kind of have to do what we can do here at the local level to make sure that our own populations are protected.
On my side, even at Kellogg, there is a-
Well, thank you. At Kellogg, there is, you know, there are no solutions. We're watching schools around us close, a multitude closed today from Harvard to, and they're doing their courses remotely. And, but there are, you know, there are obligate, you know, do you stop people from coming over? There are easy fixes, like not having the thing we're doing at North Shore Country Day. That's just prudent, but I think decisions, and we have access to some of the best local and national lines, and there are no great answers other than protect, and there's no other real solution at this point until something's brought forward.
There's an increasing body of thought that seems to think that, after getting it initially wrong, China got it right, Italy is now getting it right, Vietnam got it right, Taiwan got it right, but we're still waiting for test kits to arrive, so maybe we'll figure it out on the fly. Okay, enough of that grim discussion, and we'll move forward with hopefully something very forward-looking and optimistic. After nearly three years of negotiations with our sister agencies in Winnetka, tonight, the last of the stormwater IGAs required by the Cook County Forest Preserve Memorandum of Understanding are up for approval. Once this big step is completed, council and the community can look forward to intensive discussions on financing, planning, and implementation of a stormwater solution for Western Winnetka. Tonight, a team consisting of myself, Assistant Public Works Director Jim Burnall, and Mike Waldron from Strand Associates will present an overview of the two park district agreements. Community Development Director David Schoen will describe the zoning relief for the Skokie Playfields during the public hearing portion, and then council will hear public comment. And since our Public Works Director Steve Saunders is at home this evening doing the responsible thing, I've been charged with carrying his water as well as mine, and throughout the last several years, Steve and I have kind of been a traveling tag-team show. So, I'm going to try to do my best impersonation of him, but I don't have his chops, so you guys will have to tolerate me. Do we have a slideshow for you? Which button do I push? Okay. This is an interesting and unusual position.
We have several questions before you-
Could you state your address?
You have three minutes.
Those of you who know me know I'm much better at Q&amp;A than I am at presentation, so, and PowerPoint has never been my strong suit, so. Okay, I think all of us have seen this slide, but I think it bears repeating just quickly that this is a slide from August of 1915, thank you, in which the political commentary at the time was poking fun at the flooding around Indian Hill, and they were making all sorts of interesting and humorous suggestions for how people deal with water in their basement from ducks floating around and swimming events and things of that nature. You know, I find it interesting that here we are, you know, 100 years later, and we're still trying to figure it out. And I think that finally, after all this time and a lot of hard work on a lot of people's parts, the solution is finally beginning to come together. You know, clearly, there's still issues of dollars and cents to be dealt with, but, you know, I think we're closer than we ever have been to solving this problem. Vision process. Okay, before we get into the vision process, I just wanted to make sure that everybody who's been involved in this process is well-recognized. I'm going off-script already, sorry, everybody. You know, Andy, Rob, and Steve have been, you know, we've all been on the front lines at various points during this process, and the amount of time, effort, thought, and just sheer emotion that's gone into this has been remarkable, remarkable. And this would have never got to this point without the folks on our team, you know, sharing and really working hard together to pull this together, knowing that we would ultimately have to come back and pass the stiff sniff test with the community and also with you all. Additionally, Mickey Archimbo, and Warren James, and John Peterson on the other side, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about particularly about the golf course solution if, one summer day after we were kind of licking our wounds after a very difficult conversation with Nutria, Warren James made the suggestion that we might want to relook at the opportunity to turn our attention to the golf course property and see if that wouldn't work. And, you know, we went back and challenged conventional wisdom, and lo and behold, it actually yielded a solution that we think is workable. So, once that door opened, then, you know, Mickey, John, and Warren rolled up their sleeves, and we went through a lot of iterations, took a lot of time understanding where each party was coming from, what our needs were versus what our wants were, and I think the process has always been collaborative, occasionally a little tense, but I think that's what good negotiations include. But it was a real team effort and a community-based effort, because the one thing, and Mickey was the, was really the driving force in reminding us always that it's not about us, it's about the taxpayers, and about doing the right thing for the community. So, with that sort of partnership, it really makes a huge difference in how you approach and negotiate, and I think we found the sweet spot where we're all walking away certainly with what we need, and each of us got a little bit of what we want, too. So, I think that's the sign of a very good negotiation. This is Steve's slide, I don't like it, so I'm going to pass it. That's okay, he knows I hate the slide anyway, I've been trying to take it out for two years. Okay, just a quick recap on the Cook County MOU and the project description on the golf course. We're currently under agreement with them to construct a total of 74 acre-feet of stormwater storage with 109 feet overall. Really what that is, is we're going to sculpt to hold a 74-foot acre-foot storage, but as you know, when the banks of anything over there overrun, it'll fill the entire property and give us an additional 30 acre-feet of storage in really intense flood times. That includes an open water, wetland, and sage meadow. What we're going to do is clear out all the dead and dying trees, all the ash trees, go on a fairly robust replanting effort, and create some true wetlands environments over there that is going to be much cleaner. It's going to drain appropriately so that the areas that are not part of the wetland will be dry, which means that will help control the mosquito and insect population, and actually encourage a healthier wildlife population in the meantime. It includes water quality improvement measures cooperatively. We've worked with open lands, Friends of the Forest Preserves, North Branch Stewards, and not to forget Save Crow Island Woods, who was a strong conversation off to the side, but actually became very important as we got deeper into it. And the village will be maintaining all the improvements on the forest preserve property once they're finished. This will give you a little idea of what we propose on that site. Let's see now, Hibbert runs, help me out here, Mike. This is kind of upside-down sideways, right? So, the water is going to be coming in, I don't have a pointer or anything, do I, or does this work? Can you see that? That's where the water enters the property, okay? Can you help me here, Kathy? Okay. I'll try this for the time being, which is at the corner of Willow and Hibbert. The water will be coming upstream from the golf course, Little Duke, Duke Child's Field at this point. Whoops, what the hell happened there? You know, I have bad dreams about PowerPoint. I give up. Okay, so anyway, the water will enter from the upper left, it'll cruise its way down Hibbert, make a right turn according to this, it'll float into the area, which is currently occupied by the ditch. The ditch fundamentally runs from about here down to here. And so, what we're doing is, you know, people might wonder why we bent around this area. One of the provisions in the forest preserve agreement requires us to pay a certain amount of tree removal on a per-inch basis, and the bad news is, is during the course of the last 70 years, the trees along those ditches have grown significantly, a lot of cottonwoods, but they're huge diameter trees if you look at them. And cutting down each one of those would cost us about $300,000 in replacement fees. So, you know, one afternoon, we sat down and really plotted a course to avoid most of those really significant large trees, and it actually, I think, makes for some more visual interest as the new river that we're creating kind of meanders around the property. Why does it say the same thing? Okay, I got two of them now. Now I'm really dangerous, guys. I've got two of these. Okay, the MOU, as we said before, constructed 74 acre-feet, total storage of 109. The deal is, is that the first half-inch of rain that falls in the watershed needs to be captured and treated before water can be discharged into the forest preserve. The good news is, is that the water that we are depositing into the river after this project is completed will be much, much cleaner than what we are doing currently. Oh, I hate this thing. It also requires commitments to complete additional upstream storage projects on the available open spaces, namely the Park District, Nutria, and District 36. Now for the meat. Okay, here's the overall layout for the proposed stormwater improvement involving the golf course and Little Duke and the nine-hole course. We'll get into this a little bit deeper, but just to orient you, the golf course is on the upper left. It comes down through and runs to the 18, which is about the middle of the slide, goes underground, that little red line underneath the grain, and then pops out to the nine-hole, and then works its way through the nine-hole course and connects with some of the existing ditches and ponds that are already there that'll be reshaped to actually retain and hold a little bit more water. This is the overall golf course layout. While it isn't significantly changing, a lot of the improvements I'll be going over in a minute, but you can see that, but the whole concept is over on the far right here, this area here, is the creation of a, fundamentally, a new lake on the 18 that also borders 15, 16, and 17. And that's where a majority of the storage that the Park District is providing is allowing us to go, so. That focuses in on it a little bit more. And this will be fundamentally a lake, it won't be just a wetland, it'll be, it'll hold water all the time, but there's enough bump to give us the storage we need, and bump is just simply the amount of water above the normal water level that the pond will be able to contain before it starts flooding its banks and finding its way out onto the golf course. Our golf course architect, Rick Jacobson, was unable to attend this evening. I have to say one thing, I've talked to golfers in the community, and they are just head-over-heels with the idea of, number one, having Rick Jacobson, who's built quite a reputation, particularly on the North Shore, for doing these combination stormwater and golf course projects, and his designs are very highly regarded, and it should make the course a lot more interesting. Maybe not through reconfiguring holes, but through nuances like, you know, how they structure the bunkers, potential regrading of the greens, you know, the placement of water and how we control that, and overall, how the course works relative to how it is today. The other good news is, is that as part of the project, what the village has proposed to do is, is we dig out these big lakes, a large portion of that excavation, which we would normally just load in a truck and drive off to a dump site, will now be flipped over and put into the fairways so that the fairways are actually raised up, which will keep them out of the flood areas and make them playable on moderate and medium-level rains. So, you know, we're really rebuilding all the fairways to a good extent, raising them up. Rick has got some really interesting grading concepts that also preserve a lot of the mature trees, so it'll be a really interesting and playable course. I am not a golfer, so I can't speak, you know, maybe I'd have Mickey up here, but you'd do a better job.
Chris, from her perspective, when you're saying we're building, how much bigger is it? I mean, is this lake going to be?
I'll get to the numbers on it in a minute.
Okay, let me just size-wise.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
And since the stormwater will be in structured channels and underground pipes, you know, the conveyance will be diverted away from the playing surfaces and into areas that won't affect play, will allow the golf course to operate on quite a few more days than it currently is. Here's some slides just showing the architect's view of some new bunkering versus what they currently are experiencing, and you can see the new stormwater in the back of that one slide to the lower right. Okay, in the par three, we are actually building two new greens, the new number five green, which is... I've got to put my glasses on.
Top left.
Thanks, John. Okay, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, there it is, yeah. This is why Steve does this part of the presentation. What happens is, if you know the number five green right now butts right up against the Little Duke field, where you see a lot of the little kids playing soccer and some of the other events that the Park District runs there, so that green is fundamentally in an area where we're going to be creating some underground storage. So, we have to push it back and shorten that hole by a certain amount, and so that'll be the reconstruction of that, which will make way for the underground storage. And secondarily, the existing ninth hole will be reconfigured, shortening that hole up, and then allowing the existing green that's there to be used for a short game facility. And that actually adds to some conversations that we heard at the Park District last week about how it sounds like people aren't really crazy about that little green you have over there now, and there might be some better uses for that area, so. But I'll leave that to you guys over here in the cheap seats tonight, so. But there will be a new number nine green, which is back over here, and here's where the little practice green will be there. And then for Little Duke, which is the area south of the ice rink, there's a proposal for them to do some turf fields. I guess you'd say it was very similar to what they are doing on, what they've done already on Skokie Playfields, but to a smaller, you know, to a smaller scale. And actually, you know, Bob called me earlier this week, Bob, and I shared the information with you, but part of the zoning relief is the discussion of allowing the bleachers along Hibbert Road here to be placed within two feet of the setback. That dimension to the roadway is approximately 40 feet, and is very similar in distance to what you see currently at the Skokie Playfield. So, you know, if the two feet is giving you pause, it's two feet off of the property line, which is well in from the actual curbway on Hibbert. There'll also be hopes someday to build a open-air outdoor hockey facility. I guess there's a few of those around, and they're becoming very popular, and clearly we have a highly-supported hockey population here, and it seems like a cool idea, so we're also allowing for that to happen. This will give you just a little idea, Rob, maybe somewhat to your inquiry. On the top, you're seeing what happens under current conditions, with the blue obviously being areas that are flooded, and then underneath, you see what happens under the same scenario when we've redone and rebuilt our fairways and reconfigured the golf course. The red area is the structured storage that is contemplated in the newly-created lake, but you can see how much of that area, which is typically inundated and underwater, is now open for play even under a two-inch and three-hour rain, which I think all of us can understand is a pretty significant event. You move it forward to what's called a five-year event, which is almost two and a half inches in three hours. Again, you can see while there's ponding, most of it is often away from the fairways and contained to the areas behind the two-hole, which is that area where there's a pump house and a pond and some other water features that are in that back corner. So, the course still remains playable, especially with the raised fairways during a five-year event. The other thing to remember is that even in the previous event, you couldn't play the course if we had two inches of rain in three hours. I mean, the fairways were so saturated, and anybody who's been out there, it's like Floating Pete, right? So, even if you would try to walk out there, they would shut down carts. And when I used to golf, I remember going out there on some of those wet days, and it was horrendous. It was like walking across a wet sponge. And with these raised fairways, you'll still have a firm, dry, workable playing surface in both of these scenarios. And then we move on to a 10-year event, which is almost three inches in three hours, and you can see that things are starting to get a little dicey, but again, the good news here is that because of the reconstruction, the way the golf course drains and dries will be significantly more rapid than they currently experience. Okay, the key benefits of the project. This provides approximately 64.8 of stormwater storage, which equates to approximately 30% of the total village project requirements. It's a big number. The recontoured fairways improve drainage and playability on the 18-hole course. It provides an additional source of irrigation water via the new stormwater ponds. Part of the design is when we create this lake, that we're actually going to create a conduit or a pipe that will be able to feed the irrigation ponds and allow rainwater to be used more often as a watering source rather than, and the bad news for you guys up there is fundamentally, we'll be selling less potable water to the Park District because they'll be able to recycle and reuse the rainwater because it's captured more efficiently in an area where they can actually use it. Improves the grading and drainage for Little Duke, anybody who's had their kids out there when they were little playing soccer. I mean, I trained my kids there for 10 years, and the place is a mud pit. This will give them a really nice place for, you know, not only the training sessions, but will also allow, you know, AYSO and the other groups that use that to really expand their programs as well. And it's fully compatible with the Winnetka Park District long-term concept improvements. Mickey, I have to say, when I was looking through the documents, we used to groan every time we would get another concept drawing from Nutria, as we went from concept A, B, Andy, I forget where we ended up.
Like, T, Z, 12?
Like, T, Z, 12?
When I saw the T, I snickered. And I, the first thing I thought to myself is, oh, Nutria must've come up with another plan, because I don't remember him getting to T. And then I realized it was your plan. So, you guys are worse than they are. But nicer. I was...okay, continuing on the project benefits. The village will join with the Winnetka Park District as a co-applicant for the, for the required MWRD period, permit. The village will also provide expedited project approval process. The thing is, is that any of the improvements they make that include impervious, which is the ice rink, you know, these, these, these new playfields, the sidewalks, if you look closely at the diagram, you'll see sidewalks and the like going around those fields, and the new cart paths, will all be able to be permitted under our process with MWRD and save them the necessity to have to construct their own compensatory storage for those. So, we're actually, much like what we did with the school district, we're, we're designating a portion of our storage to service their needs under the permitting process. But when you think about it, from the reality, the real world standpoint, the water is there anyway. The water needs to be collected and contained anyway. So, fundamentally, alls we're saying is, okay, this four acres is for you, but it really isn't. It's the same four acres that we would be taking on under the stormwater project anyway. So, there's a lot of that going on here. And it's, and it's a big benefit. And as, as this indicates, the cost to, to provide this benefit, if they had to do it on their own, it'd cost them a million six. So, we're saving the community a million six in just creating those particular opportunities under the permitting process. Okay, key terms of the intergovernmental agreement. It defines the scope and the preliminary design of the village stormwater improvements. And it also provides a designated area and some zoning relief for potential Little Duke improvements, which David will review. It provides for a cooperative design review, meaning we take it to a certain point, they have the opportunity to look it over. It's a fair process in, in what they can inject to. But if we were to start to run way off in left field with some of these improvements that weren't consistent with the agreement, they would have the ability to decline our ability to go forward, which is fair. Really, what the Park District expects is us for to, to install the improvements pretty much the way that we've presented and agreed upon. And I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do it that way. It provides for an easement agreement. We've already been through this on several of the previous ones, very similar to Nutria and D36. It allows stormwater storage on and under a portion of the property so that, and it preserves space, space for the future improvements. And it provides four construction windows, starting in July and wrapping by the September of the following year. The September date is the important one. I mean, the July date is, is kind of inconsequential. But the key component is that the seed for the fairways has to be down by September 15th for them to be able to take control of the golf course the following year, I think in the fall, when the seed has had a chance to germinate, go through an early growth in the fall, goes dormant, and it goes through a, a more robust growth in the spring and the early summer. And then hopefully, by, by the end of the following year, they'll be able to open the golf course and we'll be able to stand out there and celebrate and watch golfers and enjoy their new improvements. Financial terms, okay? We're paying the Park District $390,000 as a credit for lost revenue during the golf course period. Again, we went back and forth on numerous different formulas on how to determine this. And, and the Park District brought us a number that we could work with. And also, we could, we could see a, a credibility in the number that allowed us to accept that. The village will also reimburse the Park District up to $60,000 in case we decide to pull the plug and not go forward, which is money that they've spent for their design expenses and, and supporting their efforts in moving this forward. They're gonna receive 100% credit for the stormwater utility fees that they're currently paying under the, under that obligation with the stormwater utility. So, and this is just for the Duke Child's facility. So, it won't include Dwyer Park or any of the other parks in the system, but it will require, it does include everything in the, in the, I'm sorry, not Duke Child's, Skokie Playfields, Little Duke, and the golf courses. And the village will credit the Park District for lost revenue if the project is not finished in accordance with the completion dates. You can look at exhibit L there. I believe all those terms are fair and, and appropriate, given the willingness to work together on this. We'll provide potable water for irrigation purposes at a rate equal to the wholesale rate, similar to what we're charging Northfield, rather than the, the, the standard potable water rate that homeowners and businesses pay for water. And we'll, the good news is, is they'll be using less, but the bad news is they'll be using less. So, the village will provide surplus compensatory stormwater. I already talked about that. And we're looking to provide future zoning relief for the Park District playfield improvements. And at that point, I will open it up to any questions you all have. Steve does a much better job on the, on the nuts and bolts. I'm kind of the, not that guy. So, you guys got any questions?
No, great presentation, thorough. We've seen it a lot of times and through the process. So, I think it looks good.
Yeah, we've tried to keep everybody in the loop, but, you know, certainly, it's, it is a big deal, and it's a big agreement. And, and, you know, there's been a lot of scrutiny on both sides as this thing has gone forward. But, I don't know what to say. This last picture's kind of cool. This is a guy, this is a kid sitting out on Hibbert Road, looking to the west back in the 1930s.
Hey, Chris, I had a question.
Oh, go ahead, Rob.
One of the last points on financial terms, village will credit Park District for lost revenue if the project is not finished in accordance with completion dates. Obviously, things happen. Some are beyond our control. Things are in our control, I get it. Is there a cap on that? Is there a, is there a best efforts? Is there, I mean, if these things are outside of our control?
Andy, do you remember?
Um...
This is teamwork now.
Yeah, the, the, the financial consequences of delay fall on the taxpayers of the village via us, as opposed to them.
Right. Is there a cap on, I mean, if there's beyond our control efforts?
No.
No cap?
No.
Is there an agreed upon rate?
No. So, if there are delays, though, the way we manage risk is, we're gonna be contracting all of this out. We're gonna have surety payment performance bonds. And so...
Data damages?
That's, that's where the risk is. And so, it's gonna be on those contract terms, which we'll be leaning on our friends to make sure we're covered. But, yeah, I mean, we will have insurance and, and bond coverage.
And we, and we will make sure when we get to the ultimate contracting with contractors that the schedule is laid out for the construction schedule.
Microphone.
And then protecting silver coverage.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'll lean in closer.
So, when we get to the point of doing the construction contracting, it'll, they'll make sure we have terms in there that hold contractors to strict timelines. And we'll have provisions that deal with that risk to make sure that we have recourse if the contractors don't keep to the schedule.
Okay. Yeah, the one thing, I mean, just to get a little bit in the weeds, Rob. The Park District gave us a very, very, very aggressive rate on the payment for the downtime. And we went back and forth on this for months. And, you know, in return, part of it was the risk and reward. I mean, you know, we recognized that we were getting a, a good deal or a very fair deal on the, on the, on the payment side. And in return, if we hiccup, there's a penalty that comes pretty, you know, that is also fair. So, and again, this was part of the negotiation where you kind of find the middle point, where you're good on both sides. And those two kind of fit together. So, and the reality of it is, is this isn't a big project in project terms. I mean, it's a big project for the community, don't get me wrong, but it's not a big project. And so, and it really is just moving dirt. So, unless we end up finding, you know, an underground river that happens to open up on us, I mean, you know, certainly, there's always risks. The risks are, are fairly minimal and the timelines are generous.
Okay.
Other questions? I really do not like doing this. Oh, no, I get to talk more, isn't that great?
Two for one.
Okay, I'm gonna get a drink of water here, hold on. You guys know I know this in my sleep, but I just hate talking about it. So, okay, this is the south of Willow Road area vision. And one thing I'm doing this evening, if council decides to ratify both of these, these agreements, is I am going to end the use of the term vision, because it is no longer a vision, it's a reality and it's a project. So, we have to stop thinking of this as something out there in the, in the dreamy eyed future. It's reality. So, but I didn't have time to make everybody change these things. And I didn't want to be a pain in the rear end, so I left it as is. So, this is the, the continuation of what you saw most recently with District 36, which is the south of Willow Road. The green shows some potential conveyance routes of getting stormwater into the Crow Island School. And then the yellow is, once it is deposited into that underground storage, is finding its way out of the underground storage and finding its way to the, to the river. So, this, this is a little clearer. And I asked Steve to put this together. The yellow, again, is the storage component and the, the path across the Crow Island Woods Park or Crow Island Park. The blue are areas that we own. And the red are the existing utilities that are, that are currently underground there. Now, something I want to say about this is, you know, we, where the hell's that slide? Jim? Ah, thank you. As you, as you guys remember, there was a lot of issue surrounding the original, which was a vision, of creating a wetlands in the existing Crow Island Woods. And a lot of, a lot of our residents and our friends and neighbors were pretty upset about the idea of compromising what they've come to, to enjoy as one of the really nice natural resource assets that this village has at its disposal. So, it's part of the deal, if you remember, open lands and Friends of the Forest Preserve were very concerned. And their concerns were heightened by, by the Save the Woods folks, that we were gonna do something bad to the woods. So, the commitment we had to make in order to induce Cook County Forest Preserve to execute the MOU would be that we would stay out of the woods. So, you would think it would be a pretty easy idea, but at the same time, there, there are compromises to following this route. As you can see, the proposed route, and the reason why I like this picture is if you look at the ones that the engineers like, there's no, there's no leaves. You can't even see any of the trees on that one. But this gives you a really good indicator that we are, we are definitely staying out of the woods. If you were to actually go down, there's a cool 3D thing you can do with this. But if you were going to go down and see the three dimension, that we're actually crossing through an area that, that is open. And that some of the trees that you're seeing over on the far right side or the, the western side don't even exist anymore. That's the area that was impacted. How do you refer to that, that event that took down all those trees over there?
It was the microburst?
Oh, the microburst, which creamed that section of the woods. And so, what this does is it avoids the oak savanna and finds its way over to Euclid without compromising any of the significant trees in, in the woods. Secondarily, you know, I spent quite a bit of time talking to and exploring other options on this. One was the idea of anybody who knows that area, there's a little path and a sidewalk that runs between two houses that dumps out on...help me out again, Rob?
Lindenwood?
Lindenwood, thank you. There's a little sidewalk there, right? I mean, if you've been out there riding with your, riding bikes with your kids, you've had to have used it. And then it ends going to the bark path and then finds its way up to the Crow Island Park. And I thought that would, would have been an awesome place to run the storage because it gets us out to the street quickly and we wouldn't be impacting any of the woods. But it turns out that we only have a 10-foot easement there. And we talked with the neighbors, the adjacent neighbors about some other strategies and either purchasing property or expanding the easements. And we're pretty much informed that that was gonna be a, a nonstarter in conversations. So, we had to turn our sights back on, on crossing the park proper. And that has certain downsides, too. We know that there is a certain amount of landfill in that area that came from old incinerators that used to service both Winnetka and Glencoe. It's, it's easily identifiable and easily dealt with materials. It's been dealt with certainly when, in 95, when the village went in there and put our, our storm sewer and, and water mains through. I'm certain, too, that it was dealt with when the Park District constructed their, their structure. And even more importantly, it, it had been reported to me that people were amused when they were digging the foundations for the log house of all the old bottles and cans and the like that were coming out of the ground. So, you know, it's nothing toxic. It's nothing, it's nothing substantially concerning or of an environmental level. But certainly, it's, it's fill that needs to be dealt with in a much different manner than what is commonly referred to as clean fill. So, I'll move on to the benefits of the project. Storage area provides approximately 10.8 acre feet of stormwater storage and is located mostly on Crow Island and a little, and a little piece on the park. These properties are the only viable space located south of Willow to provide stormwater storage and water quality volumes. That's the key piece here, is that we have to have a place where we can cleanse this water before we deliver it to the forest preserve. And the other key piece of this is, this is the only opportunity to serve all of the residents who live south of Willow. So, it's, it really provides a lot of relief to quite a few people. You wonder, why do we have to do something so big north of Willow and we can get away with something small south of Willow? It's because it's closer to the forest preserve. And really, what we're looking to do is retain a small amount so that we can clean it before we send it upstream and deliver it into the forest preserve. You know, because really, the storage for south of Willow ends up being the forest preserve. But at the same time, the water that's coming off our streets and sidewalks and the like needs to be cleaned up before we send it down that way. And it provides an opportunity to provide potential drainage improvements to low-lying open space near Mount Pleasant, which is over back behind Crow Island there. It's kind of a, seems to hold water all the time and kind of be a messy spot. So, we'll clean that up. And we still have an open conversation with the Park District as we get into it a little bit. If we want to go ahead and start looking at, at ways of potentially drying out the woods and making that a little bit more accessible, we can talk about it. There's a lot of opinions and ideas on that that have to be vetted and that'll require some community conversation as well. Okay, the other, the government, intergovernmental agreement's simple. It defines scope and preliminary design. It, again, provides for cooperative design and review. And it provides an easement that will let us get away. And it preserves the oak savanna. There are some challenges downstream from there, but we're gonna continue to explore those and have further discussions as we move through the process. Financial terms. We kick back $10,000 to the Park District for design expenses if we decide not to go ahead with the project. We provide 100% credit to the Park District for the stormwater utility fees. If you think about it, there's a couple little impervious, like the field, the little shelter and the like. So, they'll get off the hook for that. And we have a tree removal provision that we will pay the Park District a replacement tree planting fee of $250 per diameter inch, which again, is generous. It will ensure that anything that gets, that does come out of the woods will be replaced with something that will be a good replacement and substantial and significant. So, any questions on this one?
Yeah, just one, one, Chris. The last two points, what is the credit? Is this, is this material money? Is it little money, these credits?
It's a small amount. Rob, I don't know.
Yeah, sure.
Is the spreadsheet in the, in the?
No, it's not. The Crow Island Park annual credit is just less than $1,500 a year. The Crow Island Park annual credit is just less than $1,500 a year.
Got it. And any estimates on taking down these trees and replanting, what that's gonna end up running?
No, because we, the next step is to do a full-blown tree survey. If you go out there and walk it, Rob, poor Steve, I had him stake this damn thing probably three or four times already, but there are stakes that show the path, and I think when you go out there and walk it, you'll see that there's a bunch of small trees that the park district planted as part of your reforestation program, if I remember correctly, right? Costa? Some, yeah, some of those are gonna end up biting the bullet and will end up having to be replaced. And also, up in the corner where the extended tank is going, there's some large pine trees back there that are gonna end up probably being displaced, and they'll have to be replaced, too. But, the next step is to actually do a full-blown tree survey, and we have enough wiggle room, just like with District 36, where if we can morph this a little bit here or there and save important trees, we'll certainly take the opportunity to do that. To the best of my knowledge, on the Crow Island piece, we are not impacting any of the hardwood species that currently exist in the woods. Other questions? Well, I should be an applicant more often, this is actually pretty easy. Thanks, guys. All right, now I get to sit down, and David gets to really bore us to tears with the zoning relief. No, I do not, as you probably can well imagine, thank you.
Good evening. The first slide is just to remind the council that last year, we amended the code to allow the council to hold a public hearing and grant zoning relief on projects that are related to our stormwater improvements, and this slide just summarizes that process. So, this evening, we're talking about the Skokie playfields for the park district. These maps show the location of the area that we're specifically granting some zoning relief, as well as the zoning district, which is a single-family residential zoning district. As President Rince mentioned, at this point, the park district has a very general concept. It's not a specific plan, so they're not asking for approval of a specific plan, but they would like some idea of parameters for planning some improvements to playfields, as well as a shelter. Costa's here to answer any questions you may have on their general concept at this point in time. But, to grant this approval, there are two variations we would grant to set these parameters. One is to grant them a variation along Hibbard Road. The front yard setback is 50 feet. They're proposing, conceptually, that it be as little as two feet. That's basically to accommodate the surface of the playfield, and then to accommodate a couple of bleachers that would be over here on the far eastern end. This is kind of similar, if you're familiar with north of the administration building. They have a playfield up there. It's very similar to that arrangement, it's just here on the south side of the buildings. And then the other setback variation is along the south property line. The required yard is 12 feet. In order to accommodate some of the playfields, they're asking that they only need to provide a seven-foot setback, so a variation of five feet along the southerly property line, and again, that's to accommodate the playfield. And with that, I'd be happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions for David?
I actually do, David, on this one. This was actually the one area of the whole agreement, Chris. Thank you for talking with me about this the other day.
Sure.
But, this was the one area that was a little confusing to me, because throughout the, within the agreement, there's definitely an assertion that the park district does not have a plan that they're proposing. However, there is a plan that is rendered here, there's a rendering of a plan. And at first, I was, just needed clarification on the easements, or on the setbacks, but then I just want to understand exactly what flexibility this agreement provides to the park district in terms of the type of project they could ultimately put up here. I mean, right now, I see trees, that's nice. I see a field and bleachers, fine enough, but what's the wiggle room around that type of project? What do they decide to put a structure at that two-foot setback?
Sure.
Where does this stop?
So, one I should have mentioned, which I did in the staff report, is the park district's going to have to come back before the village council to get approval of the special use to make these improvements. So, the council will see the plan again. In terms of the parameters, it's to generally account for, this is the general design we're looking at, it's not setting it in stone as that's the plan they have to approve, and that these are the setbacks we're looking at granting.
Okay, so they, I don't mean they, these are our friends.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna call them they for the moment. If they decide to move, and it wouldn't fit, but the ice rink along Hibbard, would that be okay?
No, it would not.
And why would that not be okay?
Because that's not in keeping with the general concept that they presented.
Okay, so that language of in keeping with this general concept is within this agreement? Ben?
Right, Ben?
Yeah, so, to go back one step, if they wanted to do a different plan that did not fit within these variations, they would have to come back for zoning, for the variation approval again. They would also, regardless of whether they fit within this plan, they have to come back for the amendment to the special use permit. So, what is presented to you before you tonight is only the variations, and locked in into the measurements of the variations, so, you know, the front yard setback at two feet, they cannot go further than that. So, they can't encroach more without coming back, and this was what is the idea that is within the IGA, is that they would come before you, and you, they would get some certainty of would these variations work.
Okay, so they, there is nothing, that that will be an open-air field that goes along Hibbard? That is, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, the two-foot is only for bleachers and playfield.
I understand the bleachers, but that's...
So, yes, that's absolutely correct. The relief we're giving concretely are the setbacks, and nothing more. The special use, this is a lot like what we did with Crow Island, where they didn't really know what is gonna be built there, but they wanted to know what the box would look like. I think the purpose of laying out the concept is to put us on fair notice that if they do move forward with this, we can't get squirrely, and all of a sudden say, well, we don't want a hockey rink there, you know? And so, I think this is being transparent, that when that special use permit is presented, the expectation is we should be approving something that looks a whole hell of a lot like this.
Like this.
And that will be presented before the master plan is signed, because what I don't want to do is sign the master agreement.
No, that's, no, we move forward.
Yep.
They move forward at a later date, but if we get squirrely, we kill our own deal.
Yep.
And so, I say that to future village trustees, don't be squirrely, whoever they may be.
Costa?
Can I share? By the way, my name is Costa Gattuso, I'm the superintendent of parks for the Winnetka Park District. The photograph that you're seeing on the screen right here is illustrating the underground detention basins. Those detention basins have been created and redesigned to allow for this plan, conceptual plan T, to be allowed. With those designs, there cannot be anything built on top of these storage containment units. So, with that being said, Robert, I think that would help solidify the fact that, no, there won't be a structure any further to the east to imply or to impose on those residents. Would that help? Sure.
Could there possibly be, with the two-foot setback, could there possibly be something like a 50-foot-tall fence to block shots from making it onto Hibbard Road?
Once again, this is at a conceptual stage. What we have right now in place at the Skokie Playfield, we don't have those restraints, and the plain, or the orientation that you see on that eastern field is a north-south configuration, so the chances of those errant hits or balls going towards the east are gonna be less likely. We probably will put in a small four-foot fence as a barrier, as we have, and the rows of proposed trees that are there currently and are still shown on this map is part of the reason that we extended the field where we did, to make sure we're taking a concern and making sure we're staying away from those trees and preserving those for future generations as well.
I would also add, if there's concern about, you know, errant balls or other issues, those would be appropriate to address during a special use application. So, when the park district comes forward and they, with the final plan, and they're seeking that amendment to special use, that is something, you know, issues, concerns regarding what, you know, those, that situation can be addressed through conditions or other things that would, you know, at that time.
I might also just point out that kids have been playing soccer in this exact space for the last 30 years that I've lived here, and this goes on week in, week out, and yes, occasionally, there is an errant ball. I mean, more often than not, you see them flying over into Duke Childs more than you do into Hibbard, but, you know, you're gonna get one of those every now and then. And obviously, that's something that the park district understands how they keep those things in play, just like, since this will be almost identical to the setup that you have over at Skokie Playfields, I've seen an occasional foul ball from a softball game, you know, with enough spin on it that finds its way onto Hibbard, but it's so rare, and I don't think I've ever seen a soccer ball. Well, I've maybe one soccer ball, and you do see a fair amount of lacrosse, but I'm not sure if the kids are just doing it to...
Right.
Get back at their coach, or whatever. But, it's something, it's their specialty, right? And clearly, I don't think you're gonna do anything that's contrary to public safety and...
Yeah, the program on that field is for the smaller ASYO chapters and the smaller soccer youth, so the chances of them getting above and beyond with the trees is gonna be slim to none.
Well, yeah, that's right, there'll be trees there, too, right?
Out of curiosity, is that contemplated to be turf, or fake turf, or real turf?
So, right now, it's proposed as natural turf.
Natural turf.
But, we always have the opportunities to move forward with proposed natural, or excuse me, synthetic, if we decide to. But, right now, it's natural.
Other questions for Costa, as long as he's up there? Okay, thanks, Costa. David?
Any other questions?
Any questions for David? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the microphone up for comments and questions from the public. Would anybody like to speak on this? Nobody? Come on, Mickey.
Oh, you're surprised, I've been silent the whole night. So, I'm Mickey Arshambau, I'm president of the Winnetka Park District Commissioners, and a few things I would like to echo is, Chris, as you've said before, the amount of effort and brainpower and trust that was put into this was remarkable. Did all sides agree on everything? Absolutely not. I wasn't the only one that constantly reminded everybody, number one, we're taxpayers, we have to do the right thing for taxpayers. So, I would absolutely agree that what is in front of you to approve is one that benefits the taxpayers first, and was equally fair to the village and to the park district. I would also commend Warren James, for, he's the guy that came up with the idea to use the golf course. And the first time he said it in my presence, a cup of coffee almost came across the table. I said, there is no way in hell you're gonna use the golf course, 'cause it floods too badly now. So, but, we all thought about it, and the more we thought and worked together, we realized it actually was a great idea. So, I commend Warren for you for that, Costa for all the work he's done, 'cause a lot of this stuff was, do we have this document in place, or is this thing here, is that, do we have any current plans, what are we gonna do? So, Costa was relentless in finding that information, working collaboratively with Steve. This is a collaborative effort between the village and the park district. So, I commend those people who worked on it. I hope you do go forward and approve these things, and then the next words in my mouth are gonna be, so let's get started. Thank you.
Thanks, Mickey. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, I will then close public comment for the public hearing, and do I close the public hearing at this point?
You can just call for a vote.
Okay.
On the different resolutions.
No, I got a few things to say yet, so. All right, the public hearing is now closed. So, before we get into motions and the like, I just wanna reinforce a couple things, and Bob, thank you for reminding me, because sometimes, you know, I spoke with Bob the other day, sometimes you get so deep into it that you forget actually what it is you're doing, or what the magnitude of it is, and, you know, it was helpful, 'cause you made me go back and actually retrace my steps and convince myself, much as Mickey just mentioned, that this is a good deal for the taxpayers. First off, if we weren't able to figure out a way to use the golf course for open-water storage, both the nine-hole and the 18-hole, the delta, or the difference between putting that storage underground somewhere out in that neck of the woods, and doing the open-water storage that we're currently, totals $13 million. So, just by this collaborative effort, I hope, and I hope the Winnetka Caucus is listening to this, because $13 million is not chump change, and it came out of the fact that two public bodies collaborated intensely and always focused on the good of the taxpayers. $13 million, that the park district has helped save our community by being willing partners in this project. Secondarily, with respect to the park district improvements, when you add up the work that we're doing to raise the fairways and the compensatory storage, we're providing benefits that would have cost them, had they been out there trying to work on their own, of $3.2 million. So, if the park district decided to just embark on all this stuff without any help from the village, they'd be coughing up an extra $3.2 million of our money. So, when you think about those two things, that's almost a $17 million savings by this collaboration. So, the next time the Winnetka Caucus claims that these taxing bodies aren't working together, I'd love to have them come and sit in this room and explain to us what it is we aren't doing for the benefit of the community. So, I want to thank you guys again, because we have worked really hard and have done the right thing for our community, and I hope we can figure out a way how to pay for it at the end of the day, but that'll be a conversation once we pass these resolutions and ordinances, so. But, thanks again. So, now the fun begins. Oh, yeah, let's, okay, well, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, you guys save it for me. You guys can have at it, if there's anything else you want to say or share, now's the time to do it. I'm sorry, Bob.
No, no, I was just gonna say, from my perspective, the, and wading through this as a non-lawyer and non-engineer was kind of brutal, actually, but it struck me, there are a couple things struck me on this. One, this particular arrangement feels, having now gone through two others, this one feels momentous, quite honestly. It feels like it's tangible, it really sort of brings the whole solution together, and so, for that, I'm really grateful. Two, you know, unfortunately, we are two separate taxing bodies, we are two entities, so I kind of think about up here, what's our liability, what is our cost, what's the project flexibility? We had many, well, some closed session conversations on some of these issues, some open meeting conversations on these issues, and I knew that we were also negotiating with friends, and very bright friends. So, you know, if we were in a third-party against each other type of a thing, it would So, you know, if we were in a, a third-party against each other type of a thing, it would have felt a lot different to me. I know there were difficult moments, but I also know that we have people on the other side, as Chris pointed out, and Mickey, that, you know, we're looking out for the holistic best interest of everyone here. And, you know, from my perspective, again, I feel like a solution was provided to this public body right here, and there were some monetary issues involved, of course, but they seem reasonable. And there was a solution of a project orientation for the other side. And, you know, whether, if it was, again, two third-parties going at it, who's the winner, who's the loser, you know, I don't think that came into play here. It feels that it's right, I don't know how other people feel about that, but I'm really delighted that this one in particular came to fruition, because it just seems like this town really is the beneficiary here if this thing can come together. So let's hope it all goes as well as this agreement contemplates, and kudos to the people that were involved in putting this together.
You know, Bob, following up on that, and certainly from somebody who, I mean, I've followed this process very closely since it started, how many years ago, in terms of the original proposal? But although all of this negotiation has taken a really long time, I actually, you know, thanks to Strand for bringing some really creative ideas to start with, because I think thinking outside the box to start with has really allowed the community to, to engage in some really great problem solving, because by the village bringing forth a problem that we had to solve for our own selves, we have actually, you all, you know, I've, I've watched with, with wonder in terms of what's been accomplished, but every part of this project has improved. We're improving Cook County, the forest preserve, improving for District Thirty-Six by the storm, the, the storage there, improving for the Park District. So, you know, through this long and arduous process, we are definitely improving all parts of the village and, and amenities that we use. And I think we're, as a community, are ahead of the kinds of things that actually other communities are probably gonna have to engage in in the future. So thank you for all of your, sorry to use the word vision, Chris, but for your vision on this. And again, I think it's been long and difficult, we have, we still have all the financing and the, the project itself to get through, but I think the community should be really pleased that we're getting a much better village in the process, so thank you.
Thanks, Benny. Any other comments?
I'll do a quick one. It's strange being the new guy up here, but I sat on the other side, not too happy with the plan that was come up here before. I thought it lacked clarity, I thought it lacked vision, I thought it had a ridiculous price tag, being a taxpayer in this village. And I do think this is, I think this was a collaboration with the community who said no to, let's find a better solution. I think this is really a way to that better solution, and it's not without the, I know much time you guys, you, Chris, have personally put into it, the rest of you all, and it's appreciated, I think it will be appreciated if we can bring this home the way we hope to, at a price we, we, we hope to bring it at, and that will be a tremendous win for the village and something that I think most people thought when we, the last plan was rejected because it was just not good. My own personal opinion, sorry, but it, I think this will, is something that nobody or few thought could really happen, and it's a credit to the team working together to, to try and make it happen, so we appreciate that.
Thanks, Rob.
Chris, totally agree with you, this is a great example of teamwork between other taxing bodies, which is a big caucus platform. Appreciate all your work you've done with everybody. Bob, thanks for realizing how much arduous it is looking at drawings. Now you know how I feel when it comes to looking at budgets. And, you know, this is a big day to get this going, but on the other hand, you know, there's a lot of work ahead still to get it finished. But I do look forward to a drier community and a more playable golf course, so thanks.
There could be some good budget work ahead, Jack.
I just wanna thank all you guys, Warren, Mickey, and John, and Costa. Warren in particular, it was a, it was a great idea, even if, when you first said it to Chris and I, looked like we wanted to kill you. You know, you, you were willing to, you know, put the creative thought into it, you know, put yourself out there, and, and that's what made this work. And I'm also glad to see Scott here. The first vote Scott and I ever took on the Village Council together actually was to shelve that, that initial plan that you're talking about. And, and the belief was that it was too hard to do anything else, that we had to put this damn tube straight into Lake Michigan, which is a shockingly, you know, in hindsight, you know, it's a simple idea, and so it's appealing on that level. Sometimes doing the hard work is really where the good solutions lie. And, and in the system that we have, where we've got all these competing government agencies, the, the only way that works is if people of good faith put their trust in each other, work together, and that, that's what we, we've done here, and I'm proud to be a part of that. It also, you know, talking about looking at all these documents, this is what I love about being a lawyer, not the document itself, but the ability to try to find that solution that weaves through all these competing concerns. I, it's, you know, it's why I, I think it's the most fun job in the world, so I, I've actually enjoyed being a part of it for that reason. But yeah, the, the last thing I'll say is, as hard as all this has been, this is the easy part. And so I say this a lot, we can't get squirrely, we can't get squirrely, we can't misstate or under, understate the value of this project to this village. The seventeen million dollars Chris tallied up, you can add on top of that probably another five, six million dollars in joint savings with New Trier with District Thirty-Six. So on that level, you're talking five thousand dollars per household in the, in the village of Weneka. When you start thinking about the value that this could have for property owners in the village, you know, there are homeowners that are afraid to go on vacation in the summer because they know their basements are gonna flood. There are kids, and, and we've all probably heard these stories, I've, I've heard them, you know, kids that are sad, 'cause their stuff's getting ruined, and, and not to mention what we're doing, washing all this garbage down into the rivers of Illinois, like, we've not been good stewards, and we have to keep that in mind. We fixed this problem, the property values in this town really have some huge potential to go up. I say all that because it's not going to be an insignificant cost, and, and this is a difficult time to be talking about that, but we have to put our backs into it. So the, the, I think the hard work is ahead, but I'm, I'm really glad to see we're at this point.
All right, thanks, Ian. Want to finish it off, Jack?
Well, the problem with being a lawyer at the end of, of all this articulate commentary and intelligent commentary is, is I can't add anything intelligent to it. It's, it's great to get to the end of the project and to, and to, I've been more of a spectator to it than a, most of the hard work's been done by others before I got onto the council. So it's a, it's an amazing project, I think it's gonna have an amazing benefit to the village and to all the different taxing bodies. I can't wait to play golf out on this new course with all the cool features and everything else, so I think it's, 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 it's a wonderful result.
Great. Well, I'm glad to hear you decided to take up the game, Jack.
Playing for a while. Not well.
One last thing, and then we'll get moving. You know, in my real-life career, as a developer and a builder, the one thing I've learned is, you know, my projects are only as good as, as the professional team I assemble, in this case, you know, legal, design, you know, technical. And, you know, as a, as a private sector business person, sometimes I have been, I'm an anomaly when I'm dealing with, with people who are used to dealing in the public sector, because, you know, Warren, you know this too, that a lot of these public sector consultants and advisors, they're, they're just cut of a different cloth, and they're, and they're trained to think a different way because their clients expect them of that. You know, in the private sector, I demand creativity, I, I demand imagination, and I demand, you know, professionalism, and I also demand them to do it for no extra money. And I got two out of the three of those done, is because I, I will say this, is that I was a little skeptical, you know, I, I knew of Strand, never had the opportunity to work with him in a, in a professional environment, but I will say that, that Mike and his team, you know, he probably was cringing after a while, because I, you know, the, the conversation would always go, hey, Mike, what if we do... dot, dot, dot? And it would be back to the drawing board, run the numbers, run the models, we, we've probably modeled this thing eight gazillion times, but never once did I hear a peep, or never once did I, did I hear, no, we can't do it, without actually going back and checking, which is really the, the way you want your design team to work, is you don't want them to just offhandedly dismiss crazy ideas, you want them to go back into their cubicles and figure out whether it works numerically and whether it works, you know, from all the other constraints that design puts on it. And you guys have done an awesome job. And I wanna say that, that, you know, we're fortunate that you were selected quite a while ago to, to lead us on this process, and I think you'll admit, I mean, there's been a lot of twists and turns along the way, but clearly, the important part has been that you guys have always had an open, an open mind, an open ear, and you've never once poo-pooed a, an idea until you could come back to the table and prove it couldn't work. And that's how we ended up getting to where we are, because we kept throwing stuff against the wall, and as, you know, as a result, Mike was the one who was determining what would stick, and we ended up with something that I think actually works, and I think we're gonna find out, is within the, the financial constraints, the reasonable financial constraints that this village can handle. So I wanna really thank you for that. It's easy to design without a budget, and you guys have, have really always kept an eye on the, on the numbers and pointed out when we're, when we've been going in the wrong direction from a financial standpoint, or at least warned us when the numbers started to get scary, scary. So I know you get stuck coming to these meetings and sitting in the, in the front row and never getting to say anything, but I, I wanna personally thank you for all the hard work and your tolerance for me and my way of doing business. And, you know, this is all gonna be good for the village, and thank you so much for everything you've done. So, all right. Item six, resolution number R-27-2020, intergovernmental agreement with Park District, I closed the public hearing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For stormwater improvement at Skokie Playfield, this is up for adoption. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R-27-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Lamfair?
Yes.
Trustee Colardarchi?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Item number eight, resolution number R-28-2020, Skokie Playfield zoning relief in conjunction with village stormwater improvements. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R-28-2020? Second. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Colardarchi?
Yep.
Trustee Lamfair?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you. Item number eight, resolution number R-29-2020, intergovernmental agreement with Park District for stormwater improvements at Crow Island Park, up for adoption. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R-29-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Lamfair?
Yes.
Trustee Colardarchi?
Yes.
Thank you, and congratulations, guys, we got it over the finish line, way to go. Now we're gonna be bad hosts. Item number nine, closed session, we can't even hang around and have fun. May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss security procedures pursuant to section 2C8 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act? Roll call, vote.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Lamfair?
Yes.
Trustee Colardarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerk?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the council meeting will adjourn immediately after the closed session. Thanks. Good seeing you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.